We can all share.
We'll call the November 6th meeting to order with a moment of silent meditation. Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will have next the adoption of the agenda as presented or amended. Can we get a motion?
I'm opposed to the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Is it a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Darrell, second. We'll move on.
Christine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four on the agenda, this is the consent agenda. It is an item for action. Items on the consent agenda include the approval of minutes of the regular enclosed meeting from October 2nd, 2019, approval of minutes of the recessed workshop meeting October 16th, 2019, approval of the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau event grant, this is the $20,000 event grant for the New Year's Eve celebration. Next on it is the ratification of the contract for legal services. This is the contract for services with Ben Gallup for specified planning and related legal guidance to the board and staff. Next item is approval of resolution 2019-12. This is for FEMA, the designation of applicant agent so that we can get reimbursement for expenses under Hurricane Dorian. Next item is approval of resolution 2019-13. This is for the 2020 census partnership so we can make sure in partnership with the county and municipalities that we have turnout for the upcoming decennial census. And last but not least, the approval of mid-year bonus to employees. This is equivalent to the prior year, but it's being done in a written format so that we can show approval here under the consent agenda. And those are the items for the consent agenda.
All right, you've heard from the manager. Can we have approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Best present.
I'll let you.
Motion by hand, we approve the agenda as presented, seconded by Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Agenda's been approved.
Next up on the agenda, this is item number five. This is a presentation. It is for information purposes. This is the presentation of the fiscal year 2019 audit, and this particular one will be introduced by our finance director, Shannon Twitty, and we will be having the presentation performed by Teresa Osborne, certified public accountant.
Good evening, Mayor, Board members, ladies and gentlemen. I am pleased to present Teresa Osborne, who is a former of Dowdy and Osborne, who is our 2018-2019 auditor, as required by Northern Carolina General Statute number 159. I am also pleased to report the annual informational financial report has been forwarded to the U.S. Census Bureau in compliance, as well as the North Fund Department of State Treasurer for the county of the audit. We have received approval back from the LGC Bureau Audit has been accepted without exception. So it is my pleasure to present Teresa Osborne from Dowdy and Osborne for the 2018-19 audit. Please.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, good evening. I'm here this evening to present the results of the June 30th, 2019 audited financial statements from Town of Manayoe. We have issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which is the best audit opinion that you can receive. It confirms that your financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is the same audit opinion that you have received in previous years. Additionally, we did not note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to the audit. I'm going to review just a few highlights with you this evening. I'm not going to go through the whole report, I think it's about 60 pages long, so I've just kind of got a few highlights for you. Beginning in the front of the report, exhibits one and two on pages 11 and 13 are what are referred to as the government-wide financial statements. These statements combined with governmental activities with your general fund, your cemetery fund, and your dock funds combines that with your business-type activities, which is your water and sewer fund. In these funds, you're going to find that fixed assets and debt are included in those financial statements. I'm going to focus more this evening on what are called the fund-level financial statements. Those are the ones that are more routinely used by local governments, and they begin on pages 14 and 15. If you're following along, I'll give you just a second to get there. In the general fund, the first column, that is your general fund. The second column is for your non-major governmental funds, and that would be your dock fund and your cemetery fund. In the general fund, revenues exceeded expenses by $441,980, and that was after a $40,000 transfer to the dock fund. I want to take just a minute to review your unassigned fund balance position with the spreadsheet that I have prepared for you. Just going to pass that along to you. You don't necessarily have to follow along on that, but it's just a summary of the unassigned balance, and I think it may be helpful to you if you look through these statements a little bit closer. Although revenues exceeded expenses by $441,980, and you'll see that in the second column of that spreadsheet, you're going to find that the unassigned portion of fund balance increased $830,604 to $5,029,565. You're going to see that in the unassigned, it's about the middle of the page, and it's got some gray highlighting over it. So you can see, you started at $4,198,961, your ending unassigned is $5,029,565. And you might wonder, well, how did my unassigned go up more than our revenues over my expenses? And the reason for that is the restriction on your fund balance at June 30th, 2018 for what we call reserved by state statute, it was higher at June 30th of 18 than it was at June 30th of 19. And so because that restriction reduced, it actually added back to your unassigned fund balance. In the dock fund, expenses exceeded revenues by $47,557, and that was covered by a $40,000 transfer from the general fund. Revenues exceeded expenses in the cemetery fund by $20,171. I'm going to flip over to page 19 and just give you a little bit of information on the water and sewer fund. You're going to see on those pages that net income is positive for the water and sewer fund by $144,889 compared to $333,000 in the prior year. This is a result of increased water and sewer expenses. However, the overall positive net income means that your rates are covering operating expenses along with the depreciation component, which should help you putting money aside for future capital improvements. Additionally, your quick ratio, which is one of the things that we look at in your water and sewer fund, its current assets over current liabilities, that increased by $264,284. I would like to thank the town staff for all of their assistance during the audit, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Evidently not. Everybody's pretty well satisfied. I think everybody's ready. We got it about a week ago, two weeks ago, whatever it was.
Ready, covered, covered.
Twice, and still doesn't understand.
That's why maybe that one sheet of paper has got all 60 pages combined on one page.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Item number six on the agenda, this is public comment. This item is for information. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Action on items brought up during the public comment period will be at the discretion of the board. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the podium and identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded.
All right, somebody start it off. Johnny?
Good evening, Board. I would just like to reserve your right to speak under number nine, full business. I want to make discussion approval around these for Dare County.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to speak about a matter of community interest. My name is Bill Masi, I live on Devon Street here in Manayoe. I rise to express my concern about the indications from Dare County Commissioners that the property we call Manayoe Town Common must contain 65 parking spaces. My concern is that requiring 65 parking spaces obviates the shared uses of the public space as expressed by Manayoe residents in a series of charrettes, focus groups, and conversations that this board authorizes. In my tenures as a resident of Manayoe, I get to witness and participate in a process for community caring input that was more inclusive, aspirational, nonjudgmental, and community-focused, as the process facilitated by John Robbins. Through extensive input, which you encouraged and supported, the citizens expressed their will, and that will is to provide additional parking for downtown Manayoe in a setting that is park-like, visitor-friendly, environmentally sensitive, and welcoming as a town common. Requiring 65 parking spaces in the designated space disregards the vision expressed early by Mayor Bobby Owens, and perhaps more importantly, ignores and belittles the hopes and wishes that many townspeople invested in this transformative project. I urge you to ask the county commissioners to rescind the requirement for 65 parking spaces, to avail themselves of a presentation by John Robbins, an account manager, summarizing the process and some of the preliminary sketches, and to revise the terms of the landlords to allow the residents of Manayoe to have fulfilled their vision for a Manayoe Town Common. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jamie Anderson, and I am in downtown books, and I'd like to give you my input on the agenda item tonight, the approval of the lease with Dare County for the property between Buzzley, McCann, and the New Stare. One of the biggest hurdles to doing downtown business is, is, and has been, parking. I have about 21,000 customer connections throughout the year. People will come through my store, some even purchase, some not, so I feel qualified to tell you the biggest complaint we hear is about parking. There's nowhere to park. We drove around and around to try and find somewhere to park, and from local residents here and at the beach, oh, I'm never going to Manayoe, there's nowhere to park. So I was much relieved when I saw the plan for this space called the 53 parking spaces. When the county mandated 65, I jumped for joy because surely that would guarantee parking. Now I hear mumblings, this is not what the town wants, and that's not what 50 people at a charrette are trying on. I wasn't able to be at the charrette, but I have given the town my two cents, and tonight I'm giving you my four cents. The 21,000 people I talked to in one year is a lot more than 50, and there are bread and butter. I think every business owner would back me up on that. This is also an issue affecting local residents and customers. Just this week, I had a customer from Nags Head who said, I was so disappointed when I walked out of church on Sunday and saw it was all grass. I thought it was going to be parking so I could come over here in the summer. And then a customer came downtown at 2:00 on Halloween and was told by some children from a nearby church that she couldn't park there. So of course she had some comments about downtown parking issues as well. Please don't lose this opportunity to resolve this downtown Manayoe's number-one problem because one group thinks there's not enough common green space. You have 61 hundred square feet of green space just waiting to be utilized at the Davis Lot. The Magnolia Pavilion, gifted to the town by Malcolm and Susan Fearing, is common property that goes unused almost all year. Two places in the waterfront area, which is where most people coming to Manayoe want to be, and want to hang out two blocks away. We're getting ready to lose green space when the Arts Council undertakes their backyard renovation project, but that never seemed to be any cause for alarm. Use the space you already have, give Manayoe the parts it needs. The current concept plan being circulated shows 68 spaces but still has 1,500 square feet of open space with 5,000 green space for stormwater concern. Drop it back to the mandated 65 spaces, and there's another 500 square feet of open space. Plenty for what in reality is going to be a launching and exit path for people traveling to Manayoe. I know there have been comments before by some of the board that you don't really care about downtown, don't want to hear what we think. As your 2019 Business of the Year, that really hurts. Do you realize last year that my business gave thousands of dollars to Manayoe schools, employed three part-time people, gave, gave, and gave to yearbooks, raffles, auctions, fireworks, nonprofits, soccer teams? Do you know what I paid for flood insurance? Because most of the time when it floods, the water's coming out from the town's storm drains. Every downtown business is always at the ready of helping community causes. Please help us prosper. That's your motto after all. Preserve, prosper. Not preserve, prepare to hate. Please approve the lease with the county with 65 parking spaces. Thank you for listening, my door always open.
Now we're here in Manayoe. The process allows us to speak on subject of John Robbins, please.
Katie Woody, we're not here to talk about the man common as such. My concern goes back to when this all started, and I believe it was Mayor Bobby Owens whose vision this was, and kind of goes going on it, and we just follow it. However, I feel like that not all of the stakeholders have been involved enough to determine the impact on what the citizens want versus what the businesses want. It would seem to me that will be, since Mr. Ayers has been here, things have gone so much smoother as far as processes go. Prior to that, I think this probably what I'm addressing, which is when the charrette took place and when this was first getting started. There are a lot of questions that I have. I feel like that the community is, there are people in the community that are very upset because they grasped the vision that they thought was being presented to them, which I feel was presented too early with not enough information of where the town really was going, what the county wanted, and then there are the businesses, and we all need parking for businesses. I mean, we have conflicting two issues here. We have parking lots in town that are private, which the public's not allowed to use, that are in some cases an indicator. But we don't really have the public parking that is sufficient. I would really like to recommend that the town kind of step back a little from this. There are some considerable things that need to be brought to the forefront so that the citizens can understand what your decisions are being based on. I have a real concern about the impact, not just on this site, but on the hotel side, on the flooding with downtown Manayoe. I don't think that has really been addressed, and I'm not talking about the engineering aspect, but I'm talking about what we can do. Also, because I think that now needs to say, okay, you can't afford 2 trillion or 2 million or 2 whatever pops up. We have a limit, and so we have to devise a plan that addresses these issues before we come to the public and say, this is what we're going to do, it's a wonderful plan, and I'm so excited, and we're going to take what you guys want and implement it. I just feel like it's time to step back and review where you are, that Mr. Ayers had the controls, and what process I believe we should have.
Ken, Mayor, when you're outside, I guess, but I may have a question. I would like to approve of the contract with the 65 spaces, as Ken pointed out, because we really need parking spaces. I'd have to save a lot of money, and came up with a few replacements, and we had four. We had 51 spaces, there are four, so 65 is not much of an increase of what we had, and I think it provides room for some green area, and I think there's a green area next to Port Richard, if I know that could be used. Of course, some other things that may not be room for, except for the rental property that's not available, and so everything I described, but I love it, because fortunately it's worth it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Would anybody else like to be heard? Now's the time. All right, I'm going to close public comment here. All right.
Hi, my name is Tim T. Boyd, I live at 101 Fernando Street, and I've lived downtown for about 10 years now. Dealing with the same type of problems that most businesses do. I live right across the street from the bookstore, Manayoe Furniture, and everywhere else. You know, a long time ago, the saying was, you know, there's no such thing as a small town with parking with that purpose. That means our town is strappy. You know, people want to come here. You know, a lot of people don't realize, oh, we have satellite parking right over at Festival Park, which is not being utilized. Some of the business owners in that can park over there. If you look around, most of our parking spots downtown are filled by 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock. They don't regenerate. A lot of the ones are private ones. You know, we got a great deal with our residents because all of our residents are out by early 8:00, then Sheila, then Carletons, and those can move in, and it's a constant flow. It's constantly moving. So I think if some of the businesses could park their cars and run a shuttle, it would benefit a lot of us. I do believe that there needs to be parking. We do have a problem with our parking in this town. But also, I don't want, and I don't think, that as a community that first came together in one of the first projects that I've ever heard with multiple of meetings, charrettes that we all came to, put stickers around each one to decide what we would like. I don't understand how it's gone from one extreme to another. Because after all, please do not pay paradise and just put up a single parking lot. Have something. You know, a green space would be great. Something more than just a parking lot that you can see at Futurama or some other places. Thank you very much, Ken.
Oh, yeah, if we grant Johnny, you will too. All right, is anyone else? Let's go over it again. Anyone else like to be heard? One more time, anybody like to be heard? All right, we're going to close, period.
Item number seven on the agenda, this is a public hearing. This is the rezoning of 604 Sir Walter Raleigh Street from R5 to R2M. This portion of it is for information. Please note that later in the agenda would be the section here in which action would be taken. This is a section for public hearing. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on the proposed rezoning of 604 Sir Walter Raleigh from R5 to R2M. There will be similar rules as public comment, except for two things. First, the applicant is Ms. Zoila Torres, and she or her designee will be allowed to present their case first. If Ms. Torres is present, please let us know if you would like to speak. Second, the public hearing will need to be opened and closed by motions and votes by the Board of Commissioners.
May I open it up?
I move to open the public hearing for the rezoning of 604 Sir Walter Raleigh Street.
Second.
All right, it was moved by Ed that we open public hearing to the rezoning of 604 Walter Raleigh Street, seconded by Darrell. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, we will open up public hearing.
In anticipation of that, for this particular meeting that was resulting, should the applicant choose to present, they would have the opportunity to go first if the applicant would like to do so. If not, then it would be open to the public.
So it appears, but she doesn't feel like she needs to say anything at this point if there are people that are opposing, and would it be okay for her to make comments at her and not her? Is that acceptable?
I'd say yes, because it's her property, and she's involved directly. She's got as much right to speak as the other people. Can we open it up? Well, let's go ahead.
I have a microphone.
You've got to come up to the stand so we can hear you.
Thank you. These are like the rules for public comment, and we would appreciate if folks would come to the microphone, come to the podium there, and identify themselves so that those comments can be recorded.
I am one of the seventy. I bought the land a lot in there in Sir Walter Raleigh, so I just here to let you know who I am. All right? That's it. I don't speak too much English, so in public, I afraid.
Listen, when you're here, feel free to speak any way you want to. We welcome you.
All right, thank you.
My name is Don Owens. I live at 603 Sir Walter Raleigh Street in Manayoe, in the historic district. Thank you for having me here tonight, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. I'm here tonight to tell you that this is a mistake. This decision will be wrong if you support this. As I mentioned earlier, I live in the historic district. The town made a mistake, and now it proposes to compound that mistake by offering a solution that will make a mistake that those of us who've lived in the historic district all have lived with. Mistake, mistake, mistake. I think everyone here in the sound of my voice knows that a local home is not going to be moved into. to be moved into any part of Sir Walter Raleigh Street, east of the highway, in the historic district. If it is an historic district, then treat it as a whole historic district. The rules should apply at one end as it does at the other. That is not difficult. And if you make a special dispensation in this case, you are opening up beyond a slippery slope. It's an ice skating rink. This will happen again. And if you're not going to allow it at one end of the historic district, then it shouldn't be allowed at the other end. We've worked hard to build our community. Let's ask that everyone apply the rules, but don't make, everyone who goes to the historic district, pay for a mistake that the town made and can rectify in much other possible productive ways. If it is an historic district, treat it as an entire historic district. Thank you.
There you go. There you go.
Yeah, my name is Zoila Torres. I bought a lot in Sir Walter Raleigh. When I bought, before I bought, I called all the builders, but the town made a mistake. I think they know my case, so I don't know how can I solution that. So, this is all I can say. Thank you.
We go ahead and head up to the board?
We need to close the public hearing. If nobody else is going to have the emotion to close it.
Gina?
Hello. First of all, I would like to thank you all for moving those trees, oh, I'm sorry, 603 Sir Walter Raleigh Street. And I live in a historic district, and this job would not change the order. And moving on, I would like to thank you all for moving those trees on Sir Walter Raleigh Street, and putting them in a wonderful car. Thank you.
My name is Katie Bell, and I'm a real estate appraiser. I've covered this market for approximately, I think it's been going on 16 years now. I've known Zoila personally. She came to me before she purchased the lot on Sir Walter Raleigh, told me the price she was going to pay in cash, and asked me what I thought. I did a quick glance at everything. I looked at it, and I said, Zoila, this makes perfect sense, as long as you go to the town, and you make sure that you've gotten approval on everything that you want to accomplish. She did that. She went through every single step. She paid $50,000 in cash. She negotiated a deal to move a property, to move a manufactured home to that lot, paid cash for that, was told the day before she was supposed to move the property to the land, that the town had made a mistake. Looking at this, the town changed from zoning the allowed manufactured properties to R5, I think it was like 2009 maybe, I might be wrong, it's been 10 years or so. There was not a change to the map for another, within that 10 years. So as a real estate appraiser, when I'm looking and I'm evaluating property in the town of Manio, I was relying on those maps. And I was valuing property based on how those maps were set. Your own planning person relied upon those maps. And yes, there was a mistake made by the town, and it can be argued that you can't make another mistake, but the fact is, the property was originally zoned to allow manufactured homes. We're not asking to completely change something. It was originally that way. It was requested by people that lived on the street where there were manufactured homes to rezonate back then. And if they felt that strongly that it should be rezoned to R5, then they should have made sure that the maps got changed. And I really hope that the board will consider all these aspects of this. Thanks.
All right, anybody else want to be heard? We're going to discuss this later, will we?
Yes, we'll discuss later on after we get a closing.
All right, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the rezoning issue.
Is it a second?
Second.
A motion to close the public hearing by hand, second by Darrell. This public hearing is now closed.
Item number eight on the agenda. This is another public hearing on a different topic. This is for Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances, including the regulations for Shallow Bag Bay. This is an item for information. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on the proposed revisions to Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances, including regulations for Shallow Bag Bay. There will be similar rules as public comment. The public hearing will need to be opened and closed by motions and votes by the Board of Commissioners.
All right, this is the second public hearing. Just discussed Shallow Bag Bay, codification ordinance, Chapter 21, so and so, so and so. Can we have a motion to go into...
I move to open the public hearing for Chapter 21 of the codified ordinances for Shallow Bag Bay.
Okay, is it a second?
A second.
Who? Christine. Motion by Eddie, we go into public hearing in regards to Shallow Bag Bay, second by Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Puts the eyes have it. We're now in public, public hearing. This one is in regards to, there was a lot of discussion in the past about us controlling and governing Shallow Bag Bay, us governing the town, and through a lot of effort through our town attorney, we got it passed through the legislature, and now we're waiting for approval and if any suggestions or any comments in regards to Shallow Bag Bay. Now it's time to say it.
I'm Charles McKinney, I'm the manager of Shallow Bag Bay Marina. And this is the first time I've ever done anything like this, and a little bit of it was unclear to me. The one thing that I did not understand is the new regulation on the pump-out facilities in the marina that Shallow Bag Bay was to become part of the town waters. Y'all were saying that this needs to be documented in a law. In the summertime, this would be the case. I would have to employ other persons to do this, because the tourists would sit great on boats. And from what I understand, the one that the town does never works. Or it has not been fucking running for a while, so I give all the business from there, the marks of like, vampires, who they don't have. We have no problem meeting the need of the public and the trainees in doing this, but I do not understand why a law really needs to be kept on that. Shallow Bag Bay is very motivated to keep up to the standards. We don't like the boats that are out there who like to condone to your rules and regulations of what y'all have done, and the removal of the boats. We have one still left in the marina, now that we're trying to dispose of that was abandoned, was actually abandoned before, I believe, Michael, out in front of our marina, and we found it as a safer thing to do, to bring it in the marina and secure it from a drift and float into someone else's property, the town, to clean a little boat or whatever. But any help and clarifications at any forward movement, if you guys could take into consideration and meet with the other marina in the town waters, that would be great. I would know this is the right approach to go about, but I would like to be a part of those decisions in the future, or at least comment and conversation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I can clarify that point briefly. That ordinance already exists. That's already, that's not a new, that pump-out ordinance, a piece of that is not new. I didn't, we didn't draft that as new. That's already in the town's ordinance.
Okay, so we have inspection when that was first built, put in, and we've asked and done, when the, I wasn't there, I was there in 2002 and 2003, left, and now I'm back, and been there since 2017, in all of my talks, and think, I mean, we haven't been doing that. I'm sorry for our fault, but I mean, we can move. I don't see the purpose, and inspection is a good problem, doing that, I mean, just like in everything else, people, you know, we have to inspect, but it's more or less in lines of if the town waters of Manio do end up taking over Shallow Bag Bay, do you would like to have some feedback in that?
It's fair. All right, anyone else like to be heard? Anyone else like to be heard? All right, we'll bring this.
I move to close public hearing on the Chapter 21 for Shallow Bag Bay regulations.
All right. Second. Motion by this Shallow Bag Bay closed ordinance, second by hand. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll close this public hearing. All right, now.
Item number nine on the agenda. This is old business. 9A is discussion and consideration of rezoning 604 Sir Walter Raleigh Street from R5 to R2M. This is for action. The applicant in this case is Ms. Zoila Torres, and she has chosen to use the process of rezoning in order to change her property from R5 to R2M.
Can y'all hear the manager?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Which would allow a mobile home at this property. Ms. Torres has the right to make such application, and it should receive due consideration. In addition, the public receives due consideration as well, and having its voices heard through public comment, public hearing, and other means. It should be noted here that property owners at 602 Sir Walter Raleigh, 600, 601, and 605 Sir Walter Raleigh submitted a petition in accordance with Section 25-7 of the Manio zoning ordinance, asking to invoke a four-fifths vote requirement on this proposed amendment. Unfortunately, state law has changed, which renders this section of the ordinance obsolete. The legislature eliminated the supermajority voting trigger in 2015 that forms the basis for our 25-7 section. So pursuant to current North Carolina General Statute 160A-385, the petition should certainly be presented to the board, but it does not trigger a four-fifths majority vote requirement. It's still a simple majority. Therefore, I have presented the petition to the Board of Commissioners, and I am including reference to petition in the record so that the voices of the petitioners can be heard. This parcel has gone through the appropriate process, including review and action by the Planning and Zoning Board, which found the application to be inconsistent with the land use plan. The Board of Commissioners here has heard additional information, including the public hearing, and will consider whether to deny or approve the rezoning application.
Shall we open it for discussion? All right, this is pretty important, this is pretty important, so I think we're going to open it for discussion between the board. If the board wants to throw in an inject, or whatever they want to say, go ahead.
Wasn't the planning board recommended, did they recommend to leave it the way it is? Is that correct?
Yes, and their finding was that to approve it would be inconsistent with the land use plan. That was the finding.
To leave it as R5, I think is what it was?
The current R5.
Well, let me just say that along that stretch of Sir Walter Raleigh Street, there are about six houses that are over 110 years old. So that's why it became a historic district, and it became a historic district in 2003, which they should have changed the ordinance then, the zone then. In 2011, the owners of the lots front of Sir Walter Raleigh Streets signed a petition to change it from R to M to R5, which is the historic district now. The town did make a mistake, and two wrongs that make a right. And I believe that we should let the town manager enter into some negotiation with Ms. Torres and try to make it right for her. With that said, I would like to motion to deny this amendment to the...
I'm sorry, I might be out of line, but did you recuse yourself the first time when this was done?
I may have, but I'm, because I'm, I live on that street, so I'm not going to recuse myself the time.
But you were the one that initiated the request the first time?
To make it right, yes.
And he's allowed to continue his night?
Yes, absolutely. It's a legislative process, so it would be wrong for him to not vote on an issue like this. The rule in North Carolina is if you have an actual compensable interest, a real monetary interest in the application, then you recuse, but otherwise, you're expected to vote. It's the duty of the board to vote on issues like this.
I would ask Darrell to hold off on his motion, give the other commissioners a chance to be heard without closing his out. I think it's very unfair to make a motion without the other commissioners being heard.
Okay, I'll hold up.
I also feel badly that the mistake was made in the first place. You know, I know it was an investment, but I also know the intent of, you know, of our plans and our ordinances, and I just feel like Darrell that, you know, we need to honor what everyone else, you know, has worked hard for in the past, you know, 10 years or so on the west side of town and on that street and the historic district. I agree. You know, it should be honored, and hopefully, we can make things right, because, you know, it's the right thing to do. But I am sorry that the mistake was made. I'm not happy about it at all, but, I mean, we have to move forward.
Anyone else, commissioners?
I agree with Christine, if there's a way that with the manager's guidance and the attorney's guidance, that we can move forward and somehow make this right for the homeowner. But there has been a lot of things done, and the planning board has also looked at this very stringently, and I agree with Christine. If we do have to do something, it was a mistake made in this stuff.
Well, this, I understand this was done in 2011, so I wanted to make it really clear it wasn't done recently. This mistake, it was changed in 2011, but nothing was put in right at all. There's no documentation anywhere that the ordinance was changed, but it was, and this board, which I am part of now, is responsible for making decision to make something right because the town made a serious, serious mistake, and they were wrong. I think if, I don't have any problems with the manager negotiating with the property owners that owns the property now, but I think they should be well compensated, because you can see, as they made your presentation, they worked very hard to pay for this land, and worked very hard to pay for this modular home. And so I don't think there's much negotiating unless we negotiate all the way and make sure they're compensated in full. And by the way, I can't vote, so I'm out of it. Anybody else? All right, motion's on order, Darrell.
So I move to deny this amendment to the... So I move to deny this amendment to the zoning from R5 to R2M. And once again, I reiterate that the town manager negotiate Ms. Torres and see what we can do to make her whole.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Darrell, seconded by that we deny the property owners the thing and we keep it historical as it designated today.
So Mayor, as part of the, the motioning process for a zoning change like this, there has to be, the state statutes require consistency statement to be included in the motion.
Well, this is, request is inconsistent with our adopted 2007 land use plan. The Sir Walter Raleigh Street 604 was lawfully rezoned. All the lots funded in Sir Walter Raleigh Street is historic district in 2011, and I think this is reasonable, and it's in the public interest to deny this amendment.
All right, you've heard the motion is held by our town attorney, and Darrell, who's second? Monica?
I did.
Oh, and seconded by Richie. What's the feelings of the board? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it.
Item number nine B on the agenda. This is discussion and consideration of Chapter 21 Code of Ordinances, Regulations for Shallow Bag Bay. This is for action. Session law 2019-108, House Bill 429, that was an act authorizing the town of Manio to regulate navigable waters within its corporate limits and adding certain described navigable waters to the corporate limits of the town for that purpose. This law allows the town to make regulations and enforce them on Shallow Bag Bay, including operation of boats, regulation of mooring and uses, prevention of derelict boats, et cetera. Chapter 21 of the town's Code of Ordinances already had some regulations on items ranging from use of the boat ramp to pump-out regulations to use of public slips. Following passage of the state law allowing the town to regulate Shallow Bag Bay, draft provisions of Chapter 21 were prepared following an extensive public comment process over several months, with many comments being received in person, via special email address, via social media, in person, in person at town hall, in person at public comment sessions, and we had the public hearing tonight. The board may consider the revised regulations under Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances under this agenda item.
All right, we've heard from one gentleman in regards to, I take it as a pump-out regulations, and, you know, I've heard, and he was the only speaker. He wasn't for or against, I can gather that. He was just looking for information for his marina. So you want, let's open it for discussion. Anybody? Ready to vote?
I'll make a caveat to mine. I'd like to make the motion, but also that the town give Mr. McKenney some guidance on, on his pump-out regulations, if we could help him with that. So I'll move to adopt the revised version, Chapter 21 of Code of Ordinances as presented, and also assist Mr. McKenney in his pump-out documentation.
All right, is there a second?
Is that what you second? Help him out?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Eddie that we vote on the Shallow Bag Bay amendment, and seconded by Richie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay.
Item number nine C on the agenda. This is appointment to Planning and Zoning Board. It is an item for action. The Planning and Zoning Board has a vacancy, and the Board of Commissioners may consider an appointment to fill that vacancy.
All right. We've discussed it, and I think, I guess it's pretty clear, but if anybody, any board members have any suggestions, any other new members or somebody they would like to appoint, now's the time and place.
I think the seat that is vacant right now, am I correct that it's, it expires in January?
Yes, yes, Commissioner. The, and, and that would be to fill the unexpired term ends in January, and certainly, that person would then be eligible for reappointment, should the board choose to do so at that time.
Okay. I know that Nicole Northrup has applied to be on the planning board in the past, and I like Nicole, and I think she will be a great member on that board. She's concerned, she's a concerned citizen. I see her walking all the time with her dog in town, and so I feel like she's more than capable to serve that seat. So I'd like to nominate Nicole Northrup.
All right, we have nomination for Christine for Nicole Northrup. Is there any other nominations for that seat? Any other nominations? All right, since there's only one member been suggesting, one person been suggesting, can we ask, we named her by acclamation?
You'd still have to in January.
Right.
Point.
Yes.
This is just to fill out unexpired term.
Yep.
Can I ask for acclamation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was shallow, I didn't hear. Did I hear any notes?
Quite a second.
Okay.
Did I hear any notes?
No.
Okay. I seem to have it. Acclamation, we name Nicole Northrup to the zoning board.
Next up, item D, this is discussion and approval of ground lease with Dare County for the town common. This is an item for action. The Manio Town Common Project is envisioned to help the community, and it can play a key role in solving needs identified in the planning documents that comprise the Comprehensive Development Code. The town's land use plan notes that, quote, "Parking in the downtown waterfront areas become increasingly difficult", end quote, and it indicates the plan identified, quote, "Areas for increasing surface parking downtown to help alleviate the problem," end quote. But that's not the only issue identified in the plan, as it also indicates that Manio has, quote, "Little park space," end quote, and one of the top 10 goals was to, quote, "Provide adequate public parks and open space," end quote. A town common that can address both needs can help the community at large. Working with consultants John Robbins and Laura Woolard, the town embarked on a robust community engagement effort to involve stakeholders in conceptual planning, including multiple public comment sessions, three public presentations, two listening sessions, and a public design charrette attended by 45 people. Park slash green space and parking were consistently listed as the top two features requested by the public at the design charrette and other sessions. Conceptual plans were developed by the consultant team, including one version that took a holistic view of the whole block and another version that only considered the land owned by Dare County. Preliminary cost estimates were prepared by the consultant team, and the town has applied for grant funding from the Dare County Tourist Bureau. The town is also working on other funding streams, including North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grants, stormwater grants, foundation funds, and other awards. In fact, the county manager offered assistance in seeking grant funds. Before we can move into the engineering design phase, we need to hear about our available funding, and we also need to secure a long-term ground lease. Dare County is the owner of the properties required to make the town common a reality. The county has graciously offered a long-term ground lease on the property. The term of the lease is proposed at 25 years, which would allow the town to apply for part of Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant funding. The cost of the lease is a dollar a year. Also, a stipulation was included in the proposed lease to get the number of parking spaces to 65 spaces. The lease was approved by the Dare County Board of Commissioners on October 7, and it would require approval by the Town of Manio Board of Commissioners in order to go into effect. It is important to note here that any action taken tonight is not the approval of a specific plan. In fact, given the conditions of the lease, we will need to look closely at the site to design a town common that meets the parking space requirements while still providing a nice park and green space area, along with other features for residents, visitors, pedestrians, cyclists, and other stakeholders. I am grateful to the many people who have given their time, talent, and ideas, and creativity to this process, and we will need their talents as we work together to update the plan. In order to move into the next phase and then start with design, it would be prudent to secure the rights to the property so that we are not spending money on a project for which we have no rights. Having a long-term ground lease would provide rights to the property along with responsibilities, and the item up for consideration by the Town's Board of Commissioners is a 25-year ground lease as offered by our neighbors at Dare County.
All right. Johnny, you want to be heard now?
Sure.
Let, let me remind you folks, I'm going to get into this after a while. This board, in concurrence together, knows no more than about this plan than you do. Now, there's a lot been said, a lot of rumors, a lot of gossip, as usual, when something controversial comes up. It has not gone to our planning board. It has not been discussed anywhere. You people have had a total input to this plan so far. You know more about it than we do. And we asked Johnny to design us a plan for, for a parking lot. He is not, he is an architect, he's a landscape architect, he's not an engineering architect. So we're going to have to start out new after, one way or the other, whatever we decide to do with the property. And I'm going to get in a little later on. Johnny?
Hi, yes, my name's John Robbins. I live at 109, that lane outside Manio, I'm actually speaking for a group tonight instead of one other person, so five minutes. With that stated, I didn't design the park, as Mr. Owens said, the community designed the park. And manager, Jim, James Ayers, he described the process. It was open to everyone. We advertised on the community website, we advertised through flyers, we, it was open. It wasn't a closed process. It was transparent as possible. And we held coffee shop sessions, where we just hung out at the coffee shop, and we had, probably had, being conservative, 20 people in each of those. So we took input from a whole lot of people, and there was no group that in any way, as people made alleged earlier, that was excluded. The only exclusion was your decision not to come to a meeting and to all the events of that. And with that said, going back and looking at it in history, I worked for Mr. Owens when I was young, back in my driver's license, and I worked for his son, RV, at RV's Restaurant. And RV, I had my license, but I moved cars around that parking lot, I was crazy. The employees wanted the park as close as possible. Once it started filling up, RV said, "You girls need to move your cars, you need to move your cars right now. I need that parking place." And they'd be too busy. So I would go out there, and I would park their cars at the even sites. With that stated, as people spoke to earlier, that's what parked. It's loaded over there, empty parking spaces, places. If there's dirty businesses downtown, just say there's an average of four people that work at each business. They're on the rep, I mean, people can shake their heads, but restaurants have a lot of people that work there, and there's a, go less than that. Go to 100, go to 30, and say there's three people on average that work there. Those people parked. There's 20 parking spaces right out behind here at town hall, just send walking distance of Manio furniture. They can park there. The people from downtown Manio, the employees, they can park over the bridge. The main thing it is, is laziness, is laziness. Everyone wants to park out. They want the convenience of parking in front of their business. So with that convenience comes a penalty, you don't have those available parking places. So, and we get there. And then one other thing downtown, and I worked on the 20-year plan, hate to say it's like 20 years ago, I'm not scared, but I worked on the 20-year plan, and one of the things was, you need to pay, put lines on the downtown streets. I did downtown, like, I parked there, oh, I can't squeeze in, like, there are just two people that didn't efficiently park. And people said, well, the town's done a study, and it's more efficient without having lines. Think about why if you went to the post office or the grocery store, there was no lines in the parking lot. It would be madness. It'd be about as inefficient as it comes. So, yeah, but it needs to be lines downtown. And with that stated, from the get-go, I knew we'd be at this situation. From one of the earliest meetings, I said, "I want to hear from everybody," Laura and I did. I stood at the same spot, we said, we looked at the cameras, said, "We want to hear from everybody. We want everyone to come and give us their input." And now, I said, "But there's going to be those people that are going to come up after we've done the plan, and they're going to talk about, 'You didn't include this person, you didn't do that, it's not representative of the people, listen to me, blah, blah.'" And that's where we are today. Why do I know that? Because unfortunately, that's how Manio operates, and that's how everything operates here. So at some point, you'll have to make a decision, and you have to go forth. You listened to Mr. Ayers, and he discussed all the grants, everything that's in line. And you have these same groups that are going to speak tonight about this. You've been pulling strings behind the scenes with the commissioners and getting them. But there was good discussion at the town, the town commissioners meeting. There was discussion, "Why are y'all doing this? Why are y'all pitching for Manio? This is their project. This is the citizens' project. You're not listening to the citizens." But you have some that are just steadfast on, "We need 65 parking spaces." And while we are, you know, the church, the church came to the meetings and said, "Hey, we want to have, you know, join up your parking lot." And then we got thrown a curveball over the church, like, "The Ryans killed our plan, like they killed other people." And there's no real reasons, you know, for the Ryans to do it. But there's no real reason to that, other than theater. And, you know, I, when I was speaking as a consultant, my time to put town on that scale, my goal was to take the input from the people and put that and create a plan. And with that said, I'm going to talk, my time's up. Thank you. I enjoyed working with all of you, and I enjoy working with the town, and you can always do better.
I too speak for multiple property owners. First, I want to start off by thanking the county, the dear county commissioners. Right now, we have a site in town that's clean, that's vegetated, that was no cost to the citizens of this town. They have spent, I hear somewhere around $250,000, at no cost to the citizens of town. I'd also like to thank the board commissioners, you know, this group for embracing a change on that existing property, and negotiating where we are right now, a lease, a 25 years for $25. I come here not just to give some facts. The, there was a town meeting, and here's a copy of the presentation that was made. And this is not to create controversy, it's not to cause harsh feelings, it's just to regurgitate what's in the plan. And I'd like to correct the record. In the charrette that was at the College of Alabama, the top three issues in the charrette, as was presented to you in a plan, y'all have a copy of it, was number one was two-way traffic combined, number two, parking, and number three, bathrooms. That was the plan. That's what the public discussion was, as recorded in the plan. The plan that was presented to the board commissioners had 66 spaces in it. That was what was presented to you at public session. That was in the plan. It included the bell problem. The bell problem was not available. It was now discussed as being available. It was privately owned, and it should not have been presented as being available. The existing site with the three buildings, or three buildings, four buildings, three, put three buildings on it, have total of 51 spaces with buildings on it. The vid document that I'll talk about in a minute, the change from what was presented at 43 parking spots, as, and I, I got a copy this, this week from the town, and this is off the town's document. The conceptual plan again had 66 spaces in it. The survey on the existing property with the buildings had 51 spaces. The survey on the existing property with the buildings had 51 spaces. These are facts. In the agreement that was negotiated for the work to be done, one of the elements was to meet with the mania planning board. I've been informed that meeting never occurred. I'm not criticizing anybody for that, but the town planning board has some technical knowledge about space layout, green space, and stuff like that. It could have been beneficial. This board, to my knowledge, has ever, never voted on this conceptional plan. Again, the plan was changed, the bids were accumulated, based on a change what was presented, of 66 spaces to 43 spaces. And it's a fluid plan, things change. And for everybody in this room, I'm the one who mentioned it to county officials. I said, "There's a problem with plan, it has less parking in it than the plan that's being pursued than the plan that was presented, than the conditions on the property with the buildings." So, I take responsibility for that. But I'm nobody, I'm an individual that runs his mouth around town. Something, and I'm wrapping this up. Something, and I have these documents for you. And I think it'd be most beneficial for each one of you if you spend the time to read the documents. Read the engagement letter, John Robbins and his staff to the beautiful plan. It's as nice as any plan would be in any town. And I applauded then, and I applauded that. It's a wonderful plan, but there's problems. And that is the dialogue we're having with the gifter of the plan. Right now, for you, the county has cleared the lot for $250,000. They're willing to put up $800,000 worth of land. That's a million and $50,000 worth of gift for $25. Think about that. I'm saying, "Thank you, county." I'm saying, "Thank you, county." But this is something that I'd like to give to the board, including the record. And that's just a piece of the closed budget. I'm not gonna do that. The budget numbers that were done prior to Mr. Ayers' arrival on the town board, the estimated cost for the plan that you're discussing and talking about is a million, eight hundred and 12,685 dollars. Please let me finish. With the demo of the property of $250,000, that's $2 million. $800,000 for the land, this project is $2,862,685, with no budget from the county. The county has been cooperating. We have an opportunity to accomplish all the goals that we discussed. To increase parking, as by the contract entered into, Mr. Robbins, it was to include more parking, additional parking. The only thing I'm saying, there's talented groups of people here, there's a talented group on your board, a talented planning board, and a willing county who has offered a million and $25,000 worth of property for 25 bucks, a million fifty, for 25 bucks, is what they've offered. Where does excess funds come from? Thank you very much.
No, thank you. We're not getting in a rebuttal, Johnny.
It's not a rebuttal, it's not a rebuttal. I just want, if I just have one minute, it's not a rebuttal.
No, you're not gonna get back up? Well, I had to let him back up. I'm gonna be frank.
(inaudible).
No, no, I'm sorry.
Can I give the board this?
Yes.
Just what I'm giving the board is the plan that it, that is 60, it shows the 65 park, parking spots out. And it, I did it, and it, honestly, there's any way where it can meet your orders regarding bothering, stormwater, and I'm hanging off the stage. So, that's it.
Can I get one?
Thank you.
John, one more. Take it one for the record?
Yes.
No. Thank you.
I'd just like to concur with John in his, but his comment was, "It doesn't meet the goal of this plan." That schedule does not meet.
It can't meet your orders.
Well, it seems to me we have a choice. We can have a parking lot, we can have a beautiful landscaped area, or we can do nothing. That's it.
And I just want to say, because I'm getting really impassioned about it, because when Malcolm talks about the county gifting us this piece of property, the way I see it is, I'm also a Dare County resident, and I pay taxes also, so their gift is paid for by all of us, basically. And, you know, we can't forget that the county pulled out of those buildings some time ago and left them in a certain state that we've had to maintain or deal with for many years. And so, basically, right now, it looks a whole lot better already as it is. So, you know, without making the county mad, and I want to say a really ugly word about it, is that I think what John proposed was a great plan, and it maybe included the bail property, and for whatever reason, the bails were not contacted, you know, we're not gonna take the property from the bails for, you know, a parking lot or a town park. And the church, you know, they have every right to decide they don't want to be connected. You know, and if the county wants to not lease us the property, and the county wants to put up a parking lot and put up some meters, you know, if that's what it takes, then let's just put up some parking meters. I mean, let's just, you know, pave every green space, the Davis lot that we got a grant for. It, I just really, you know, I'm like, a couple people spoke. I don't think that it's a numbers game as far as, you know, how many parking spots there are. I think it's how, you know, how and where people choose to park. And there may be certain events, the Christmas event, Dare Day, certain events, no, we cannot handle, you know, the parking for these events. So, you know, it's not every day. We're not talking every day there is a parking problem. And maybe it's lines. And Jamie, I know, I respect your investment in the town, and what you have to say and what your customers have to say. But when I go places, when I go to Edington, which is my other favorite little waterfront town, I don't expect to park in front of their shop. I mean, there are plenty of parking on the side streets for people to park, for business owners and employees to park and walk. If you have a drop-off, make the drop-off, go park. When I worked at the Christmas shop, I had to park across the highway and walk, all of us did. We didn't park in front of our businesses. I mean, it just needs to be smarter parking. You know, their parking space is proposed here. I just don't see, you know, where we're gonna have to bend to the county after, you know, the mayor's idea and the work that all of the citizens, as John says, we were all brought into it. I remember him standing there saying the same thing, that there was gonna be people that came up afterwards that didn't like it, and he was exactly right.
Mayor?
No.
Rich?
Yeah, I got a question. It probably can't be answered, but what are the county getting them more parking spaces from?
The what?
What was that number drawn from, from the county? I don't understand that.
It was, probably, tell, no.
They just picked a number out of the air, it said 65, or whatever it was?
It's probably what they were being fed as an appropriate number of parking spots.
Okay.
I don't think any parking spaces were even talked to the county, to tell you the truth. Like I said, I have not talked to the county, except one-on-one, I've talked to some of the county commissioners. And again, we have, I think, three choices.
Let the county put up some more. Let them pave, or their property, park a spot.
You know, what Christine says is beautiful.
No, it's not beautiful. I'm not eloquent about it, but I'm just a passionate about it.
Wait a minute, Christine, I gave you, I gave you a chance, I gave you a chance to talk. It's my chance.
It just makes sense.
Unless you want to continue, then let me continue.
No, you can go ahead, go ahead.
It seems to me like we have three choices here. Go with the county proposal, which it is county property right now, totally. We have got no money in it whatsoever, as Malcolm said. We've got a chance to have adequate parking, and I don't think any of you has seen, James, I don't even think he has the plans tonight, there's a layout left on one corner about, if you all remember, where the White House was on the corner, if you can picture it. Most of you are residents, many can remember the White House. I told James, when he got, getting ready to hire an architect, tell him to make sure that we had a layout for green space, not a small amount, but that whole corner would be laid out with benches, water fountains, granary, everything. And it was not a small space. That was the whole corner of Essex and whatever it is. And so, we were given a combination of parking spaces plus green space, trying to give somebody, everybody something to do or something to have. I have talked to the tourist bureau, as a matter of fact, I'm on the tourist bureau board. We're getting ready to apply for a grant of, how much money, James?
Total value, total value of that phase was 760, 700, I'm sorry.
700, well, say $700,000. We're getting ready to ask for outright grants from the tourist bureau for the parking lot.
It's a, Mr. Mayor, the total value of the, of that first phase budget was 732,000 and change, and of course, they will, they were talking about funding up to 366,000 under their new rules.
Which we would get outright, another, what the county's put in the property now, we would be getting another 300 and some thousand dollars from the tourist bureau at no cost to the taxpayers of Manio. James also is pursuing grant funding from the state, I don't know who he's even talked to, I haven't asked him because I haven't gone that far. But we're getting ready to probably get, as Malcolm said, a $2 million project for probably six, $700,000. And it's our choice to make whether we want to have a green space, which we will not get any money from the tourist bureau. And I don't know what the county will do with the property. The county has not, I kind of talked the county into, I'll be truthful about it, let Manio have it for a parking spot, because I've seen three proposals this, this year. We've sent out, Malcolm said about when y'all met, the main thing y'all sat down, the problem was in Manio was parking. The town sent out a, some, something, I don't know, some kind of brochure about our problems, what's the biggest problem? Parking. I've seen three different designs and said parking was the biggest problem in Manio. Now, we got a chance to have parking or not have parking, and I'm to the point right now, I'm about to have it, it's, y'all have seen it more than I have, truthfully. And I don't know what, where to go from here. I know when Johnny designed the property, he had in three of his charrettes, 60-some parking places, and this is his, laid out with a green space, which green space was what I hired Johnny. I went and asked him to come, I knew he was an architect, landscape architect from NC State, and he was good. I walked Johnny over to the property, he probably had never walked over it before in his life with the planner, and told him this is what the dream was. And I told him, "Let's don't call it a parking lot because it didn't sound sexy enough, let's call it a town common." That's how it got its name. And it was done that first day we walked over it. Not sorry I hired Johnny, not, he did a good job, he did just what he was supposed to do, but he is not a engineer and architect, which we would have to have, the layout, the planning and everything. And we would have to start out fresh, which we would start out fresh. This has not been pre-planned or pre-arranged or nothing. It's wide open tonight for us to make a decision. And here's the contract with the county, and we would get 25 years for $25. And all they're asking, and I think county manager called James and said, "James, will you, we're gonna put 65, 66 parking spaces in here, is it all right?" Yeah, basically, that was it in a nutshell.
Yes, in terms of timing, the, the vote for the town common lease occurred on October 7th at the Dare County Board of Commissioners. On the Thursday and Friday before that meeting, the county manager contacted me regarding two items. One was the part of grants, and the part of grants required a 25-year lease term as opposed the initial 20-year term, so they graciously added 25 years to the thing. I was also informed that there would be a stipulation for 65 spaces. This was on either the Thursday evening or Friday before their Monday vote.
The only thing I'm gonna end with, we will not get any grant money for a green space. But we were gonna put green space in there on our own. I mean, the town had it in the plans to ask the engineer to include it. So, if we sign this, you're getting your green space and parking lot at the same time. If you ask for the green space, you will get nothing, we'll start out, somebody will start out fresh. So, it's up to the board to decide.
And I watched that county commissioners meeting, and there was two commissioners on that board that they did not want to put a stipulation into that contract, that 65 parking spaces. Can we kick it back to them with a lower number of parking spaces? I mean, I don't know if you do that in contract.
I guess we can ask.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we can ask. Yeah, nothing wrong with that.
Is that?
May I address?
Is this thing, I don't know.
The what?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I may address, because the commissioners, commissioners comment, I will, I did receive phone communication, actually, this afternoon, and the county manager is graciously providing feedback to me. And with the 65 spaces in there, the, in terms of the ground lease, it did, it did have in the lease, in the lease, not just verbally, a stipulation for 65 spaces or other plan as approved by Dare County. I got the, I was under the, I was under the impression that we would certainly be able to present a plan, and if, and if we didn't meet that target, it would still receive due consideration. And certainly, we have looked at options for this since that stipulation came up to, and going all the way back to the CAD draw, to the survey files, to see if we have some opportunity to provide a significant amount of green space, maybe as much as two-thirds of the original plan, despite the additional spaces. But before we can move forward with engineering design, we certainly don't want to be spending taxpayer money unless we believe we've got rights to the property and we believe we have the opportunity to move forward. But if it's the will of the board, we would be certainly happy to work on plan revisions following this and go and present that to the county to see if we can get some concurrence with some, some appropriate form of plan that would include both elements.
I can't go with that, that lease with that stipulation in there. That's just my personal opinion on it.
I agree with Richie about that.
Do you want, do you want to just hold?
We are the capital, Dare County.
Do you want to just hold, do you want to just hold off and be back in discussions with the county, or do you want to kill the plans?
I mean, as far as I just, I mean, we really haven't had discussions, I mean, I've not had a discussion with the county. I mean, they changed it, you know, from a number to another number for some reason. It wasn't from, it wasn't from us. Wasn't from this board.
I think what the town manager was just saying, it's not etched in stone, the exact number of spaces, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, Commissioner.
What I'm seeing, or what I'm hearing, is that we have an opportunity to get a lease for $25 for this property. And, I mean, we're a long ways from deciding what to do. I mean, planning board hasn't looked at it, really, hasn't the planning board even...
No, I mean, we're a long way from, and from funding.
We're a long way from anything.
I think we need to somehow move forward.
But we've come a long way, too.
I mean, planning board hasn't looked at it, really, has the planning board even?
No, I mean, we're a long way from, and from funding.
We're a long, we're a long way from anything.
I think we need to somehow move forward.
But we've come a long way, too.
We're forgetting one thing, the county still owns this property, we don't.
Yeah.
And they own other property in Manio also that, you know, we could use for parking, probably.
I'll give my two cents, if that's okay.
Please.
I think there's a lot of issues that are compounded in this one piece of property. We do have a green space issue, we do have other areas for green space, we have a wayfinding issue, that's certainly the case, where there are other parking areas, but we need better signage and education to get there. On the other hand, I do feel like it's, if somebody gifted me personally a piece of property and said, you have to do A, B, and C, I'd probably say, thank you, and do A, B, and C. But again, it's, it's this group's investment, it's not mine. So I feel like I'm going to do whatever the group wants to do, I'm going to do what the town wants to do. I do know the number one issue that's always come up on surveys is parking. Everybody always says the number one issue is parking. This is an area for us to help that. Now, I do think there are some other areas that we can use in other parcels, such as the Davis lot, that'd be a great place for green space. The parking across the bridge would be a great area for wayfinding to educate people that there are other parking areas. But I do think this is a, I certainly don't want to sound ungrateful to the county to, for them to offer something and us to deny it, you know. I don't want to have a bad relationship with them, I want to work together with them. And I think there's some kind of compromise where we can, we can work together. I'm not saying 65 spaces is right, or 10 spaces is right. I do think it would be silly for us to have a parking issue where we had 51 spaces before, and then we still only have 51 spaces or whatever the number is. It seemed like that would be inefficient and a waste of your money, to be honest with you, for us to, to do something that has the same parking spaces. Can we renegotiate with the county? Sure, we'll do whatever, whatever you want to do.
Well, could we, let's, what, how do y'all feel? We asked the town manager to go back to the county manager and see how he can negotiate and negotiate between the town and county, and see what we can come up with, and then bring it back to the board whenever.
And I will say, it's, again, not our property, but if they wanted to put something else besides a parking lot here, as long as they're within the town code, they certainly could, and I would hate for them to put something that we don't want there than something we can be involved in.
I think you know, Eddie, and everybody else knows, the county is not going to pay for putting a parking lot for the town in Manio. You can believe that. Because if they put in a parking lot for the town in Manio, they're going to have to put a parking lot for Kitty Hawk, Nags Head, Gil double Hills, they have a obligation to the entire county, not just to Manio. Now, what they do with it, I have no idea. I would suggest that we allow the town manager to be back in discussions with the county manager, see if we can't come to some kind of a settlement to work out a plan that would be agreeable to both parties. Of course, now, the county doesn't care, I can tell you that, because we're just part of the big system, a small part. And so, what's the feeling to the board?
I'm like you, Mr. Mayor, I don't think the county has a problem if we got James to, you know, get rid of that 50 space.
Well, just maybe lower it.
Yeah, exactly, that's all I'm asking.
I mean, rather than kill a whole project, we're killing millions of dollars here tonight over some green space. And that sounds a little stupid to me, but I come from the business community, and I don't come from the flower community, I'm sorry. But I want green space also because I know people love green space, and they want it. But if you find out, green space is hard to come by because nobody wants to pay for it, they want to talk it, but they don't want to come up with the money. And parking lot's a different ballgame, so it's up to y'all. Mr. Mayor, something?
I agree, let the manager go back and renegotiate with the county, and go ahead and see what we can get.
The board won't do that, we won't have to vote on it, we just suggested. Is that all right?
I think that's what Ann and I said in Los Conley, wasn't it? There's arguments on both sides, sir, so I think you need to go back and let's look at this on the.
Is that all right with everybody? The town manager go back and talk to the town manager, see where we are?
Yeah. And bring it back up on the 20th, put it on the agenda for the 20th.
I got one more thing I want to bring up. I noticed that Johnny, Johnny sent a nice letter out, five pages, and I didn't get one. Did anybody get one, except Richie?
What is it?
Oh, this is, this is from Johnny. This is the reasons he was against.
Oh, no.
There was a blast email sent out.
No.
He mailed John Wilson, Richie Burke, Benson, I don't know who Benson is.
Rodney and Sarah.
Tim, I don't know his last name. Bill Massey, Billy Parker, and Angel Corey. That's the only one that these letters went out to. And I wonder why that was?
I can say I sent one out to the man who concerns citizens group prior to that, and they asked them to share, because they're about to.
Well, everybody should have seen it.
Well, they didn't, they didn't extend it out to everybody.
Okay, I know, I know you did.
I'm sorry, I did send that to everybody.
You sent it to one special group?
No, I did not.
Not you, baby, he.
I'm sending now.
Okay, all right, we're, we're over this, we're going to leave, we're over this, we're going to leave it up to the town manager to see what he can negotiate. All right, what else comes up?
Item number 10 on the agenda is called out as new business. However, because the, because the agenda, there was, there was no amendment to the agenda, therefore, there is no new business. Item number 11 on the agenda is mayor's and commissioners' comments. This agenda item is for information.
I'll go last.
Okay. Christine?
I've said enough already.
Yeah? Richie?
I'm here, thank you.
Eddie?
I'll just try not to jump back, but I think what, what is great about this community to me is that we can all work together, no matter what differences we have. So I think this issue is, in the big scheme of things, not the biggest thing that's ever going to come from Manio, but I think it's something we can all come together and, and figure out together. It's not worth losing friendships over for a parking space. But I hope that we all, all come together to figure it out.
Ann?
I agree with Commissioner Mann, it's, some of this is a little silly. I think we're, it's a very serious opportunity that we have here to take advantage of, and we need to, we need to strike quick and not dilly-dally around, but also listen to everyone's input, however we may think it is, good or bad, but take all that into consideration and come to a happy meeting, and let's move on with this project.
All right, Nancy?
Well, as y'all probably know, I lost my election, so y'all have a new commissioner coming on board. So I just want to thank the fellow commissioners for the last eight years, I appreciate serving terms with y'all. And I also wanted to say it's a shame our small town has become, has been taken over by corrupt politics from Mayor Owens and Malcolm Fairney and other town members. Y'all all know it, it's been going on for years, it's behind the scenes. And also, behind closed doors, deals are the future for Manio. Good luck to all of y'all. That's all I have to say, Mayor Owens.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're certainly welcome.
Appreciate it. Anything else come for the board? Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Darren Second by Christine.
Our recess.
All right. We're standing adjourned.